To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. It's, uh, welcome to the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners Work Session. Uh, it's May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, it's good to be back in Kansas. I've been gone for a while and, uh, adjusting back to the time here a little bit. But anyway, uh, first on our agenda is, uh, Health Department, Teresa Fisher.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa Fisher, Director of the Health Department. I'll remind everybody to step up because of the, the extra noise outside today. But, um, today's work session, we put together a few topics that we, uh, felt were really relevant to the work that the team is doing and that we thought you guys would enjoy hearing about in the public. So we also have some different team members that don't always, um, speak. So you guys hear from me a lot. But today you'll hear, uh, be hearing from Carrie Delft, our Clinical Services Division Manager. She's gonna do a little bit of an organizational review of how she reorganized her Clinical Services Division. Um, really, the planning started last year and it's come to, into fruition this year. You're gonna hear from Stephen Beam, who's our, uh, WIC team leader, and he's gonna give a little bit of a, kind of a past current and preview of the WIC changes that have been made into effect due to the pandemic. And then last but certainly not least, you'll hear from Sky Reid, and she is our Medical Reserve Coordinator, and she's gonna give an overview of that program, but also talk about, um, a federal grant that we were rece- recipients of earlier this year. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the team, and Carrie's up first.
Morning, Commissioners. Carrie Delft, Clinical Services Division Manager. Uh, let's see. This morning, just, uh, an update on kind of the Health Department as a whole and then some changes we've made, uh, throughout the last year or so. Uh, so this is how we were organized in June of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, around this time, we had Missy Mittendorf as our, uh, brand-new Family Health, uh, Division Manager, uh, and we had the resignation of Derek Flurlough, our Infectious Disease Division Manager. Uh, that division was created in August of two thousand and twenty due to the pandemic. Um, so at that time, five divisions with various programs. Uh, in June, with Derek's resignation, we moved, uh, the entire Infectious Disease Division really under Clinical Services, uh, to take on the bulk of the, uh, COVID-nineteen response. Uh, and then here again, just, it's moved under a program, uh, to a program under Clinical Services, uh, and that kind of encompasses all of the work we do around infectious disease, um, our work on COVID, and then just the reportable diseases that we kind of deal with on a day-to-day basis. Uh, with, uh, taking on that division as a program, there were a couple other changes that were made under Clinical Services, uh, in Craig's Division, Community Health Outreach and Planning. Uh, I had previously supervised Environmental Health and Childcare Licensing, uh, and those moved under CHOP, uh, because of the work they do out in the community. It seemed like a natural fit there. And then we moved, uh, Epidemiology under Clinical Services. So with Environmental Health and Childcare Licensing, that took nine staff, uh, to the CHOP Division, and the one Epidemiologist, uh, came under me. So this slide is kind of where we stand right now, uh, back down to four divisions. Uh, currently, that Finance and Administrative Division, uh, we're looking for that Division Manager. And then another notable change within Clinical Services, um, I previously had one Clinical Services Team Leader that oversaw our Immunizations, STI, Tuberculosis, uh, in our Communityable Disease and Family Planning Programs. That was really just a lot of, uh, kind of programmatic and supervision work for one, uh, Team Leader. So upon, uh, Diana's retirement, that was divided into two Health Service Team Leader positions. So the way that work is divided now is we've got Immunizations, STI, and Family Planning under one Team Leader, and, um, our Infectious Disease, Tuberculosis work, uh, under another. Uh, currently, one of the RN positions under the Immunizations, STI, and Family Planning is open, uh, due to the new Team Leader's promotion, uh, from an Immunization Nurse to that Team Leader. And then in the Health Services, uh, the Team Leader for Infectious Disease, Tuberculosis, those two RN positions are currently vacant, uh, and posted, uh, for applications. We did some work on, uh, the STI Infectious Disease and TB, uh, RN job descriptions, really to kind of divide it out and make it a little more specific. We had previously had, uh, three nurses that kind of rotated through those programs, but nobody was really, like, designated as the lead for any, uh, single one of them. So part of that, um, division was to really line out the responsibilities, kind of who was managing, uh, just the day-to-day clinic work in those programs. Uh, these two medical assistant, uh, positions were created with the Infectious Disease Division. Uh, they are both vacant and not posted at this time, as we kind of, uh, continue to plan where this division's going. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, Sydney McElmurray is our new, uh, Immunizations, STI, Family Planning Team Leader. She was promoted. And then, uh, Marla Worts was the previous Team Leader in the Infectious Disease Division, and so she's taken on now all of our reportable disease work and tuberculosis. So, uh, both doing very well to learn their new roles. Uh, we do have great staff in Clinical Services that are trying to, you know, pick up where they can to help, uh, carry the workload while we look for those nursing positions. Happy to answer any questions.
Like, uh, immunization for coronavirus, does that fall under, uh, immunizations now? Is that?
It does. There is quite a bit of crossover between those programs, uh, through Immunizations. Those are, that's our walk-in clinic, and we do TB skin testing through that. But, uh, TB, like case management, um, medications, treatments, that would fall under that Infectious Disease, Tuberculosis.
No, thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Stephen Beam, uh, as Teresa introduced earlier. Uh, I am the Team Leader for the Shawnee County WIC, uh, Office. Um, today I'm gonna go over a little bit about what we did during the, uh, pandemic when it first started, how we kind of transitioned our services, working from more of a remote component, and then kind of how that's affected the program since then. A, a little bit about the program first. I'm not sure how familiar, uh, all of you are with WIC, but, um, the Shawnee County Health, or the Shawnee County WIC Office oversees the WIC services for Shawnee County, Wabunsee, and Osage. Uh, smaller counties, obviously, they don't need, has much day-to-day support. Uh, so we do have a schedule where we go to Wabunsee twice a month and Osage four times a month. We do send a dietitian from here to those respective clinics. Uh, the WIC program is, of course, for pregnant, breastfeeding, postpartum women, infants, and children up to the age of five, provided they meet the income guidelines, which is set at a hundred and eighty-five percent of the poverty level. Uh, that does adjust annually. Um, CAN Care nineteen, uh, and, uh, SNAP or EBT enrollment also can qualify participants for the program. Uh, we obviously focus on, um, overcoming health disparities and promoting recommended nutrition intake-related habits. Uh, we also do a lot of referrals, uh, to other agencies where we feel our clients can benefit from services that, that they provide as well. Uh, during the pandemic, when that hit in March of two thousand and twenty, we were able to utilize, uh, federal waivers and remove the contact portion of our services. Uh, this waiver was going to last until, uh, ninety days after the emergency declaration ended, uh, and it was renewed, uh, during that time, several times. Uh, what that meant for us was that we had to adjust the way we conducted our nutrition assessments, our measurements, and the benefit and card issuance. Uh, working from more of a remote standpoint, uh, it did involve a lot more technology, laptops purchased, phones, things like that. We worked from home. Clients did not have to come into the building. Uh, we did maintain a minimal staff to accommodate certain needs that did exist as far as, uh, formula substitutions and things like that, special forms coming in. Uh, we also were allowed to bypass the measurements that would normally be a part of each nutrition counseling. Uh, we do make an effort now, uh, to try to get those measurements, but with the waiver still in effect, we are operating under the ability to move past that if, uh, it is not available. Uh, and then benefited card issuance, a lot more mailing and things like that. So, uh, we, we did have to change our fundamental setup, our staffing in the building for quite a bit. Now, that lasted until August of two thousand and twenty-one, when we did all start to come back into the building. We still maintained a minimal client presence at that time, but the staff were all back in the building in August of twenty-one. Um, this next slide here just kind of goes over a little bit more about what we did. Again, laptops, cell phones, uh, working from home, uh, lots of good communication. Uh, a minimum of one, uh, professional, uh, RD or RN was available to handle any, uh, needs that came into the office or were needed at that time, along with one clerk, in order to answer phones. Uh, we did have, we did have to redo the, um, phone setup where our clerks would call in to a specified line, and then we would return calls to clients to get our appointments scheduled. Uh, we mailed out a lot more handouts, uh, and, uh, really just did everything we could to modify to work within the waiver guidelines, but also continue to provide the services that we did for the clients. Um, again, in two thousand and twenty-one, we came back, masks, everything we could do to maintain the safety of, uh, ourselves and the clients that we served. Again, there was a very minimal client presence. We slowly transitioned into welcoming more and more clients, and as of right now, I'd say it's about fifty-fifty, the clients that we have coming into the office versus the ones that we still, uh, serve over the phone. Um, we obviously did a lot as, as far as, uh, removing toys and shared items from the lobby, uh, lots of wiping down, lots of sanitizing, all those types of things as well. Um, I included this slide just to kind of review what our total enrolled, total participating, and our percent, uh, not in, or our percent that are enrolled but not participating numbers were during this time. I started three months before the pandemic and kind of went through the entire pandemic until we started coming back. Uh, the main focus I wanted to include with this was the percentage of enrolled but not participating. There's gonna be a lot of variables as to why clients are coming in or not coming in, um, but this I more or less wanted to use to demonstrate that. Even with all the changes we made, we really didn't sacrifice anything as far as the amount of clients we were able to serve or the way we were able to help them. Um, as far as maintaining our caseloads moving forward, uh, again, we are still kind of transitioning into getting more clients back into the office so we can get those measurements and perform that type of care. Um, uh, staffing is always an issue. Right now, we are down two staff, so it is, uh, a little harder to maintain the exact same caseload, but we're doing what we can to get that done. Um, there have been other concerns as far as CAN Care renewals and SNAP benefits that went along with the pandemic that affected clients participating in the program or not. Um, as far as tech capability goes, maintaining the computers, maintaining the phones, keeping up with, uh, what's needed with them. And then just one thing that has came from all this was clients do tend to have a preference, uh, for not having to come into the office. Uh, the remote appointments have provided an avenue for, uh, families who maybe have transportation issues or find it hard to get out of the house to come bring the kids in. Uh, they do find this convenient. And moving forward with the, uh, new benefits that are going to be, uh, that, that the state of Kansas is going to adopt from the previous waiver, um, it is gonna be more pressed upon us to get those measurements. So we are still in the process of trying to figure out what exactly might be the best way to do that, or what, um, amalgam of ways might be the best way to present that. Uh, so that's something that we're, uh, gonna be looking at the next few months. Uh, let's see. I did include, uh, this as well. This was from the state, uh, webinar. There was a state webinar on April twenty-seventh that went over how the state of Kansas is planning on moving forward with the WIC waivers. It doesn't seem that there is going to be too much different than what it has been during this, uh, pandemic timeframe, aside from, uh, that, uh, desire to get more measurements and to stay on top of that a little bit better. Um, but I did include a few quotes from the document that they put out with that. Again, we're gonna continue to waive physical presence. We can still issue benefits remotely. Uh, sixty days of the certification is the desired goal to achieve, or to achieve those measurements. Uh, the state agencies will draft policies and procedures regarding to this, provided by July first. And then adopt, uh, when those waivers are adopted, they will remain in effect until two thousand and twenty-six. Any questions or anything I can elaborate on a little bit more?
Did the ARPA funds help, or did that cover the cost of all the computers, laptops, phones, everything?
At the time, I was not in this position, so I'm not exactly sure how that broke down specifically happened.
Betty Greiner, Director of Administrative Services. I believe, uh, that was all from the CARES Act. Uh, that was the first round of COVID, uh, funding, and we really, uh, not only for the Health Department, but countywide, you know, with all of our offices, we really geared up with computers and, uh, cell phones if necessary and all of that.
So it, it, it seems tough to get all these measurements over a phone. I mean, uh, do some of these clients not have phones too? Is that a problem?
It's not so much the clients having phones. I think of the lot of it, or a lot of it is the opportunity for the clients to get the measurements from doctors' offices, to retain those records, to pass it on to us. The new waiver is requesting, uh, uh, visual, uh, accommodation with that as well. So either something printed off from the doctors, or one thing that we are going to do, of course, is we'll be open to get those measurements, even if we conduct a remote appointment. Uh, we could tell the clients, we'll come in, you know, within the next month or so. We can get measurements and, uh, kind of complete that portion of it as well. So there's a few things that are gonna be up in the air as far as getting those.
Are, are you seeing a reluctance, people coming in, or most everybody?
I think, I think people have gotten spoiled, uh, with, uh, being able to be home and we're, and, and not having to bring in the kids and stuff like that. So I think it's, there is, there is maybe an attitude towards it now that there wasn't previously, um, that it's just, you know, a bit more inconvenient. And, and since we've been allowing it for so long, you know, it's been three years, we got clients that are on the program that haven't came in yet. So, um, it's, it's sometime, and it obviously depends on the family, but...
So what's the downside to not coming in?
The downside to not coming into the office is just that face-to-face communication and interaction. Um, a lot of times, clients might possibly be trying to, um, do other things when they have an appointment set up over the phone. Um, so there hasn't been a lot of times, mo- the most optimum time to talk, but, uh, the measurements is probably the main thing, just being able to get tho- that direct of face-to-face contact, get those measurements, check iron, do kind of the other assessment, uh, uh, aspects that we are intended to conduct without the client being there.
So our nurse-family practitioners go out into the homes.
Mm-hmm.
Why wouldn't the nurse-family practitioner be able to have the WIC information provided at that time?
Yes, I'm, that actually doesn't sound like a bad idea. I don't know exactly how the NFP and their visits and everything are conducted, so I would hate to speak on that as far as what they are expected to do and what they handle.
Hi, Missy Mittendorf, Family Health Division Manager.
Hi, Ms. Bittendorf, Family Health Division Manager. So the Nurse Family Partnership nurses are only going to have a caseload. So that, those caseloads of twenty-five per nurse, if they're on WIC, yeah, they could, they would definitely be able to get all that information, but that's going to be around seventy-five to a hundred of the whole caseload, so it's only going to cover a portion.
As opposed to the three thousand that are on WIC?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we can get out to three thousand homes.
All right. And the amount, yeah, the amount of clients.
You never know till you try.
I just, I worry about that some people maybe will say, I didn't understand all the rules, I didn't understand all the qualifications, I thought I understood, but maybe I misunderstood, maybe there's a miscommunication. Again, as you said, if you're at home and you've got young children, is your focus really on that, or where are you focused at? Are you able to absorb and make sure that all the information is being communicated from your department to them? And sometimes you lose that in that over-the-phone, remote access.
And to be fair, I would say that that happens in the office as well. If mom or dad come in with a few children and they're running around and distracted, just coming into the office doesn't necessarily remove that component either, but, yeah.
Want to go back to the, you said there was like twenty, twenty-two percent that aren't participating? You think that's a high number, or, I mean, it looks like it's pretty consistent in there, but I've.
Reviewing month to month in the last year and a half since I took this position, our enrolled but not participating rate tends to hover in the high teens or low twenties. And that is, everybody just doesn't come in for their appointments. You know, things come up, and there's always going to be some that kind of get missed or lose track of time.
Is there, what do you do on your end to try to bring real these people in?
We are active with our outreach component to provide WIC information and WIC literature at any and every event that we can go to. We have end-enrolled but not participating lists that we can generate every month where we can actually reach out to clients that still are certified, but have maybe missed a month or two of appointments for whatever reason, where we can try to get them back on the program. There's a variety of different ways that we try to reach out to our folks.
When you say program, how long does the program, is there no, isn't it set really time that you have?
Well, every certification lasts a year. So if, if, say a client comes in and gets that recertification, and we tend to issue three months of benefits at a time. So any benefits issued today is the twenty-second. So if we were to issue benefits today for three months, they would go out to August twenty-first. If they didn't come in or make an appointment for August twenty-first and say they didn't get back with us till the end of September, they just wouldn't have gotten benefits until they come in for that next appointment.
If childhood immunization, is that part of the WIC program, too?
Childhood immunization is not. That is a separate component.
All right. Any other?
Yeah, is, so the regulations associated with WIC, do they come from the state or from the federal government?
They come from the federal government, the Food and Nutrition Service portion of the USDA, and then that goes down to each state, and based upon what the policies are, a state will have some latitude to modify or tweak policies as they come down, but there is going to be a certain amount that is bedrocked in.
And so how much flexibility do they even give us in how to administer the program here?
The flexibility as far as how we can administer the program is going to be directly tied in with the state. The flexibilities that we have right now probably lie solely in scheduling to a certain degree, based upon how many phone or in-office appointments we choose to focus on obtaining or highlighting. And again, that's going to be kind of based off of client preference, staffing, there's a variety of considerations that will go into that.
So like, I'm just, I'm just thinking, like, you seem like a sharp guy. If you come up with a better way to do this, are you actually able to do it, or are your hands going to be tied by regulations?
There's always probably going to be considerations beyond what I would be focusing my interests on that might be hard to overcome personally. I think the remote access is a good thing. There's other considerations with staffing where in-office presence and things like that might have a potential to cause a few problems, being that we are understaffed and, you know, some staff are going to call in sick, some staff have, you know, appointments or things that come up last minute. So there's kind of a lot of, the way our schedule is set up, we schedule out anywhere about a week or so, a week to ten days, depending on the type of appointment. So when someone is calling in or something comes up, someone needs to go home early, already being down two dietitians, it makes it a little bit more difficult to keep and maintain the caseload without pushing appointments back and scooting that up, so there's variables in every, every portion of that, that some within our control, some without.
Well, I know dietitians are in short supply right now. And is, I mean, is there, is there anything happening at a higher level to, you know, maybe lighten up the qualifications a little bit so that we can maybe get somebody in the door?
If there is, I'm not directly aware of it. I know the state is aware of the shortage. I know even at a federal level. Ms. He was just at the National WIC Conference where that was a point of discussion as well. Starting next year, dietitians are going to be required to get a master's as part of their internship instead of a bachelor's. So looking forward, it does not have the brightest outlook as far as getting dietitians in and maintaining that presence. I don't know what flexibilities the state would have as far as authorizing other folks in the health field to become eligible to be WIC CPAs, to be able to administer benefits and things like that. But aside from outreach and just trying to get our, you know, job availabilities out there, it's, we're trying to do all we can anyway.
So the, the master's level requirement, it's my understanding that people that are not master's level now are grandfathered in, right? So who, who came up with that qualification?
The qualification, I'm not exactly certain, but I would imagine that qualification would have been through the CDR, which is the governing body on diet, on dietetics. And I, as far as how that would have been established through policy, through lobbying, through accreditation and other organizations, I couldn't say.
Okay. What does CDR?
CDR is the Commission on Dietetic Registration. It's the governing body that presides over all dietitians.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a very important program, and it's, I think it's going to be even more and more difficult to find people when they increase the regulations on who can do it. And so, I mean, it gives me some fear for the future of the program.
And, and one of my worries, too, is with, obviously, WIC is in every county. So counties might decide how to operate their clinic a little differently. I know some counties are maintaining a staff presence from home, so I don't know if that would, would affect our competitiveness with other people coming into the field looking for work as well. So, yeah, I mean, there's just a lot of variables, a lot of things that are, that are, I don't know. We'll see how it goes, I guess.
Well, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Morning, Commissioners. Craig Barnes, Health Department. Not Sky Reid, not presenting, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce her. Sky Reid is one of our Emergency Preparedness Community Outreach Specialists. I think it's important to note as she comes up and does this presentation, Sky was onboarded in the midst of the pandemic, mid to late two thousand and twenty, and came on board kind to help and assist with kind of repurposing and revitalizing the MRC program. During her time, if you guys can remember back to the pandemic, the MRC program was utilized and very instrumental in the deployment for our testing operations and our vaccine administration opportunities that we provided out in the community. And so I think it's very important and to note, when Sky was onboarded in the middle of all of that, trying to learn through Health Department programs, policies in the midst of a pandemic, also helped to bring on a multitude of MRC volunteers, deploy them adequately throughout our community, and has now been working to kind of revitalize this whole program from the kind of the ground up through what she will present on a little bit more with our MRC Rise Grant and everything else. So without further ado, I'll introduce Sky Reid.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sky Reid. I am here to talk about the Shawnee County MRC. First thing is, what is MRC? MRC is our Medical Reserve Corps. It's a network of about three hundred thousand volunteers in about eight hundred community-based units throughout the United States and our territories. Basically, what we do is we organize local volunteers to help with any preparedness response, exercise, drills, things like that. It includes medical and non-medical individuals. You don't have to have a healthcare background. I think a lot of times people see Medical Reserve Corps and assume that they need to be medical to participate, and that's just not true. I did put down a breakup, a breakdown of the different units within our Kansas territory. We have seven in Kansas with Butler, Reno, Wildcat Region, Jefferson, ours, and then Kansas State Animal Response Team. So they're an MRC that is all veterinarians. So it's, if we have a situation where we need to evacuate, like animals or vet clinics or shelters, they can come and help with response on that, and we can team up with them in situations like that. What does the MRC do? At the local level, we all have a, an MRC unit coordinator, which is my job here, and then we also have regional MRC coordinators that help and assist all of us lower levels. During a public health emergency, volunteers, staff, like emergency vaccination clinics, pharmaceutical distribution clinics, but it's all based on their expertise and their Functions may include vaccinating and distributing pharmaceuticals, medical screenings, patient education, traffic flow. For a clinic, a lot of times we use our MRC with our flu clinics to just make sure that the traffic is flowing and going through and that we don't have a backup there. Mental health consultations, registering patients, entering data, and then stocking our supplies. So some of our MRC volunteers, we just bring out to do paperwork, and they love it. They get to talk to everybody that comes out, they get to make connections with our community, and that's the only job that they do, and they absolutely love it. During a non-emergency, they can be ambassadors. They can help us with children's health screenings, they'll go with us to health fairs. We did a Shawnee County Suicide Prevention Walk, and we had some MRC volunteers come out and just talk to people and give them information and try to bring them into the MRC and let them know what we do. So the need for MRC, it happened after nine eleven, when we had tons of medical people that wanted to help. They wanted to be a part of this response, they wanted to use their skills, and we realized that there was nowhere for them to organize, there was nowhere for them to find out where they could be. So they developed the MRC to make sure that we can recruit, to make sure that people knew where response was needed and to deploy them effectively. How do we help our community? Disaster cleanup, first aid, and medical support during large public gatherings. A good example of that is Country Stampede. A lot of times, we will partner up with emergency management, and we will staff their medical tent. Community education and outreach, we, we have done the Juneteenth celebration, we did Community Health Fair, the SCSP events, emergency preparedness and response trainings and exercises. We do have grant-required exercises that we can bring our MRC in to help us with. Emergency shelter operations, disaster medical and mental health support, medical facility surge support, and then mass dispensing efforts, which flu clinics, COVID, really good examples of that. The exercises and drills. So we have grant requirements within the CHOP department that we have to have exercises yearly. With our Health Department being large, we actually have to have two. Our MRC can come and help with that as actors, they can be facilitators, they can just use their expertise to help us find the correct ways to do things. The whole point of them is to find gaps and see what we need to fix, so it's really nice for them to get hands-on, real-world training as well. Recently, we have been partnering with emergency management to do active assailant drills throughout the community, and our MRC can come help with that. So they can also help if we have tabletop exercises or real-world exercises, functional exercises, we do all different kinds, but their expertise and knowledge is really helpful in those situations. COVID response. As Craig said, I was onboarded during the pandemic, and I actually know most of you from my time in emergency management. I was brought into emergency management literally three days, three weeks before we shut down Shawnee County. So baptism with fire, for sure. But my biggest thing has been staffing our clinics, staffing our, our phones, staffing our testing sites, our isolation monitoring and things like that. So during the pandemic, I was able to onboard one hundred and twenty-seven volunteers in our community, and they staffed all of our clinics, they staffed our call center and our testing sites. Since March of two thousand and twenty, we have had six thousand nine hundred and twenty-three point nine two volunteer hours. And if you look at the monetary value, which is provided by NHO, it's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-six cents. So that's what we would have been paying for all of this time. And I think that's personally incredible, that people are willing to spend that much of their time to help their community. And we had lots of medical personnel, lots of retired nurses, we had lots of student nurses. We developed a partnership with Washburn, and it was wonderful because we were able to bring in nursing students for some of their clinical hours to our COVID vaccine clinics. So they would have an instructor there, and they would actually be able to administer vaccines and count it as some of their clinic hours. These are some pictures of our incredible volunteers. I wanted to make sure that I included them. One of our lovely volunteers that's in this picture volunteered at absolutely every single one of our vaccine clinics, and she now has a job with the Shawnee County Health Department. She just loved us so much she couldn't leave. These are just a couple of things from some of our volunteers. Claudia Hamer has been a volunteer with the MRC forever. She also volunteers with the Police Department and things like that. She just loves to be involved. And she said it is an honor to be a member of this MRC group over these many years. I believe that it has been fifteen to eighteen years for me. This organization has been working with the Shawnee County Health Department, has, has been involved in providing what has been needed to make up the lives of our community so much better. Our MRC group has been on the front lines, providing vaccines for the H1N1 epidemic and for the COVID-nineteen pandemic. I was proud to have been able to participate in each of these events as a part of the clerical support staff. During my tenure as a member of the MRC, we have seen changes in our society with mass shootings, and again, MRC has stepped up. We took steps to better prepare ourselves for mass shootings and active shooter events in both schools and local businesses. As the group grows in numbers and experience, I know our community and her citizens will reap the benefits of our training. I just reached out to all of my MRC and said, hey, anything you guys want to share with the Commissioners? I'm putting together a presentation. And Claudia was immediately sent in her response. She called me, she's like, what do you need? How much do you want me to say? She would have come and spoke to you guys if she could have. And then Monia was the other one, the reason I volunteer with the MRC. One, I get to meet lots of new people every single time I volunteer. Two, I love serving my community and providing a service to improve their health. Three, I met people from the Health Department that became my future coworkers, and making that transition into my new position much easier. And four, because I was retired at the time, I love being able to go to, to in-person to help out with clinics when others might not, when others might have been short, and I appreciated that I could use my nursing skills in a way that I had not done before. And six, it filled my cup. I love that she put that for number six. That's what I hear a lot from our MRC. It fills my cup. It makes me feel good that I can contribute a skill that I have to help our community. Trainings through MRC. So all of our MRCs without a current license to practice, they receive training and certification and first aid from Red Cross and the American Heart Association. We CPR and first aid certify every single one of our MRCs. We can also recertify, so nurses and things like that, as their certification expires, we do that free of cost for them. And then other trainings and certifications, mental health first aid. I am a mental health first aid instructor for child and adult, and we make sure that all of our MRC have that training as well. Stock the bleed. And then we also fit test, which is the N95 fit testing for masks. We fit test all of our MRC volunteers that way. If they needed to go into a situation that was not necessarily the safest, they were protected. We give them all HIPAA training to make sure if they ever have any sort of medical information given to them, they know where it stops and what to do with it. And then basic ICS structure training, which is Incident Command. We all know that from COVID, what the Incident Command is, but we want to make sure that all of our MRC volunteers have that training as well. that all of our MRC volunteers have that training as well, because if they're deployed to an emergency, they need to be able to follow that incident command structure. RISE grant. Um, so, the Assistant Secretary of Preparedness and Response, which is ASPR, and then the National Association of County and City Health Officials, NHO, um, they offered a funding opportunity for Medical Reserve Corps. Um, it was through their COVID-19 Response Innovate, Sustain and Equip grant, which is RISE grant. Um, basically, what it wanted to do was make sure that MRCs had plenty of funding for the COVID-19 response, but also to continue functionality after, uh, the pandemic, to make sure that we had the trainings, the equipment and things like that, to continue our MRC work. We asked for $25,000. So, all of the money has to be spent down through the grant period, and I personally felt like that amount of money was feasible. I didn't want to get in over my head, so we asked for $25,000, and we were awarded that. Um, what we were wanting the money for was expanding our MRC unit, using, getting new recruitment tools, flyers, information, things like that to distribute, to bring more people on. Uh, materials to increase our training. So, the mental health first aid training itself is like $2,000, of course, to get somebody instructor certified. Um, so we wanted to make sure we had money to make sure that myself or whoever else could do the training was certified in that. Um, go bags for our MRC volunteers so that they can deploy directly from wherever their homes are. So, um, if we had a deployment, I could call, we'll use Monia, call Monia and say, "Hey, I need you to deploy to X, Y, and Z." That way, she doesn't have to come to the Health Department, get things together and then leave. I actually brought one of our cool bags. We have these wonderful MRC bags. And they're stocked with medical supplies, stethoscopes, uh, blood pressure cuffs, first aid kits, stop the bleed, and then they all have, um, their vests and their medical reserve shirt and hat, um, as well as like their lanyard and for their badges. Uh, badging was another thing we asked for money so that we could have a badging system that they could just be scanned when they're deployed, that would say, uh, you know, Carrie Delft's RN. So, that way, she would, they would know exactly where to put her. Um, or like Claudia is, uh, not medical, so it would say on there that she's not a medical, uh, professional, so they wouldn't send her to a place where she's ill-equipped. Um, so that was one of the things that we wanted with the badging system, to make sure that everyone had one just ready to go, they could deploy from there. Um, we also used some of the funds already to attend the 2023 Preparedness Summit, myself and Dylan Hart, who is my counterpart, um, in the EPCO department. Um, we went and we were able to attend so many seminars about MRC and recruitment. I was able to network with a lot of MRC units that, massive MRC units that do incredible things that we just haven't gotten to yet. So, I was able to make connections there, and they were able to give me a lot of information. So, I think it will really benefit our MRC going forward. Um, our mission statement for our Shawnee County MRC is, is the mission of the Shawnee County Medical Reserve Corps to provide exceptional and equitable medical and mental health and administrative volunteer support during local and regional emergencies. We strive to promote health and wellness to our community as a whole while providing volunteer opportunities for citizens to support our community so that it can thrive. That is our mission statement that has, we've had forever. It was like one of the one things that I found when I came in and was like trying to dig through old paperwork, and so that is our MRC unit, uh, mission statement. And my hopes for the MRC going forward are to reestablish some policies and procedures that we just didn't really have, that just weren't very functional, um, to reestablish those, to bring on a lot more volunteers, to get far more heavily involved in our community, um, and to take the resources and the knowledge that our MRC have and be able to use it community-wide. And then, if you would like to be an MRC volunteer, uh, the best way to do that is to go to SERVE Kansas. It is a new system, uh, through KDHE. You go on, you register as a new user, and then it'll have you join the MRC that's closest to you. Um, so if people are further away, it'll, it'll direct them to whatever MRC unit is closest to them. And then we did a little QR code, easy scan.
So, there are seven MRCs in the state of Kansas.
Mm-hmm.
And we saw that there's two in Wichita, and then Hutch, and then El Dorado. So, those are all going to be kind of in that general area.
Mm-hmm.
Then we have Manhattan, um, Topeka, and then Oskaloosa, which kind of seems the odd one out. So, what are the services that Jefferson County is focused on? Do we know?
I'm, honestly, I'm not quite sure. Most MRCs are, I mean, it's, it's kind of an overarching thing. Most of the MRCs, it's, it's preparedness response.
Okay.
Um, so normally, it's going to be vaccine clinics, it's going to be community outreach, things like that.
So, curious, and you may not know the answer, but what's absent is Douglas County, Wyandotte County, Johnson County. What are some of those areas doing?
I believe that most of them are Missouri. I believe most of them are directed to an MRC unit that's actually Missouri, so this is just Kansas.
Okay. And then, uh, how does the MRC interact with CERT, which is through emergency management?
So, actually, Jake, uh, with emergency management, and I have actually been talking a lot recently about trying to bring those two programs together. Um, that way, we can grow both of our units and then just have like far more trainings that can go community-wide. Um, so that is something that is, is in the works right now, is trying to bring those two units together, because they're not currently.
Okay. Um, oftentimes, in emergency management, we talk about deployment to other areas if they have an emergency.
Mm-hmm.
So, for example, if there's a, i- in emergency that occurs in Osage County, our emergency management team may be dispatched down there to provide that help and assistance. Is the MRC under that same kind of protocol?
Yep, we are deployable. So, through SERVE Kansas, um, like I said, the whole, your whole MRC unit is registered there, and something I can do is if, so if Dusty messages me and says, "Hey, there's this emergency in Osage and we need deployment," I can put into our SERVE Kansas MRC unit, "Hey, we need volunteers for this emergency in Osage," and they will actually sign up and they can deploy there as well.
And the final question, I know that, how does this stay under the Health Department other than it just being medical and not under emergency management? Because it seems like a lot of what it's doing is more emergency management-type things.
Um, I think a lot of that comes with EPCOs. So, we're emergency preparedness. So, Dylan and I work pretty closely with emergency management, and during COVID, we were actually embedded down in the EOC. Um, so I think we work kind of hand-in-hand. I think it stays under Medical Reserve Corps, uh, under the Health Department, because we do offer a lot more immunizations, flu clinic help, things like that. It's more community outreach. Um, the disaster response is just like the big piece of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
How many volunteers do you have? Do you have a database of?
Yeah, so, so currently, we have 89 volunteers registered in our system. Um, as I said, we onboarded about 127 volunteers during COVID, but when the system all changed over through KDHE, um, a lot of people just didn't sign back up. Uh, we did notice an exponential amount of burnout after COVID, um, which I think everyone kind of felt. Uh, but we had a lot of volunteers that after doing 100-plus hours in clinics, they just wanted to take a break, so they haven't signed back up. So, we currently have 89.
Eighty-nine. You mentioned, uh, there were volunteers for veterinarian.
Mm-hmm.
Type issues. What, what does that look like?
So, we don't have any veterinarians currently, uh, onboarded in the Shawnee County MRC, um, but the K-State Animal Response Team, they're all veterinarians. So, um, a lot of stuff over towards like Wichita and Manhattan and things like that, they tend to have a lot more veterinary because of the schools that are over there.
What, what type of emergency would, would they be responding to? Would it be an outbreak of some kind of?
The animals?
Yes.
The vets? Um, I know, uh, when I was talking to one of the Medical Reserve Corps, Regional Coordinators in Butler not too long ago, uh, they actually had fires that were happening, and they didn't have vets to come and respond to like animals that had been injured in the fires. So, I would assume that that would be the kind of things that they would respond to. I'm not sure what they do over in Manhattan as far as the veterinary side. We don't have vets yet. That is a hope, that we have some vets join our MRC so that we have that.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you, Sky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Teresa, does that complete your presentation here? Uh, next on our agenda is we have a public comment. I don't know if there's anyone here from the public that we would like to speak on any subject. Don't see anyone. Um, so we'll now entertain, uh, administrative communications. Kellen, you're, you're on.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kellen Seitz, uh, OVG 360 in the Stormont Vale of Ensign. Uh, we've had a busy past couple of weeks. Uh, we graduated, I think, every, every high school except for, uh, except for Hayden, uh, in the past two weeks. So, uh, lots of, lots of happy families and, and new graduates, uh, out of the facility. Yesterday, we did Shawnee Heights, Seaman, and Washburn Rule. Uh, last weekend, we did all of 501 schools. Uh, so over the past two weeks, we've had a little over 20,000 folks through the building uh, just for graduations on themselves. Uh, we also hosted the final Topeka Tropics football game on Saturday of this weekend, where they took home their first-ever, uh, CIF victory. Uh, they are 2-0 in exhibition games and 1-19 in, uh, league play. So, I, I was kind of joking with the team about just scheduling more exhibition games as opposed to the, the league games. Um, but, uh, we've also got the Evans United Carnival, uh, taking place. Uh, we worked, uh, and a big shout-out to a lot of the communication with our, our county teams, uh, emergency management, Shawnee County Sheriff's Department. Uh, I know Jim even got involved on, on some of the communication with, uh, graduations and traffic flow patterns and getting folks in and out of the building and, uh, and coordinated with, uh, with the graduations yesterday. So, a big team effort, uh, all along the way to make those things run smoothly, and looking forward to, uh, a little bit of time off here soon. So, um, yeah, uh, busy, busy weekend and, and just wanted to update you all on that. So, happy to answer any questions if you may have them.
Kellen, what's the process look like switching over from a football, uh, game to a graduation in that amount of time? I mean.
Yeah.
It had to have been like pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah, it's a, it's a full, it's, it's about a full 12-hour turnaround, uh, with a, with a heavily-staffed operations and union operations crew to entirely break down, uh, the football surface, the playing surface, uh, clean the facility, turn it around, set up for graduations with stages and chairs, uh, and not only that, access points. Um, we did get, uh, some support both from, uh, our other events that we had on property. One event I neglected to mention, uh, during this past weekend was also the Horse Show that took place, uh, which loaded out on Sunday about 4:00, which was about the exact time that Washburn Rule was coming in and Shawnee and Seaman School District was leaving, uh, the building. So, it was a lot of, uh, a lot of traffic planning and coordination. Uh, emergency management lent us the use of their cone trailer, uh, to, uh, allow us to create, you know, what would not normally be, uh, traffic flow lanes, right? We're double, we're double exiting traffic out on to, uh, Topeka Boulevard. We're double entering traffic off of 21st Street. Uh, it takes a lot of, a lot of planning and commitment and coordination from not only our teams, but, you know, a, a lot of the folks that, uh, that supported in that effort, which is, you know, the Shawnee County Sheriff's Department with added, uh, patrol units, squad cars, uh, traffic flaggers off of, uh, three different points, which was Topeka Boulevard, 21st Street, and then the intersection, uh, right there at the Harley-Davidson shop at, at Topeka and 21st, uh, just to kind of keep traffic moving and traffic going. So, uh, it's, it was, it was quite a bit. Uh, our operations director, uh, Matt Rockers, I think, lived at the building from, uh, about Saturday afternoon at about 5:00, and he worked all the way through graduation yesterday, uh, and the breakdown of graduation. So, I think he put in about a 27, 28-hour day, and I, I don't expect to see him until about Wednesday. So, uh, it's a lot of effort.
Wow, thanks for that.
Kellen, do we store all the tropics, the turf and all that?
We do. Yeah, we, we store the, the playing surface on-site. Uh, it, it kind of shuffles around from location of where it's stored inside the arena or exhibition hall, depending on, uh, the other events that are taking place and the need for storage for those other events. But yeah, we store that.
Very good. Lot going on.
It was. It is. Thank you, Kellen.
The three-ring circus.
All right. Um, anyone else wishing to speak? Well, with that, I guess we're adjourned, so thank you for attending.